Call the meeting of March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five to orders. Secretary Colorol.
Hubert?
Here.
Gillespie?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
LaShay?
Here.
Sepuentes?
Here.
Olivas?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance by states of America, the republic, the dance, one nation, under God.
Okay, so we only have one public comment tonight, but I'm gonna hold that until after our festivities. So I am gonna go ahead and put a motion on the floor to appoint our new school board member.
So move.
Second.
Secretary Colorol?
Gillespie?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hubert?
Yes.
Sepuentes?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Okay. Member of, uh, new member of oath. Yeah. Brian Moreno, would you step forward? Okay.
He's going to get you one.
We gotta have him.
It's on? I pray. Yeah, so I'm gonna read sections of the Board of Oath, and then if you affirm those, I'm gonna ask you, or when I pause, just say I do. Okay, so there's nothing to memorize. So, let's begin. I, Brian Moreno, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Member of Board of Education of East Aurora School District One Thirty-One in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear or affirm that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. And I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by a majority decision of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As a part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility of my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for East Aurora School District One Thirty-One. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the ability to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as an education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community's school or schools to advance the vision of East Aurora School District One Thirty-One. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision of the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Welcome to the East Aurora Board of Education.
Okay. So with that, we are gonna move on to the Community Relations Report.
This evening, we have our student board member. And I know I saw her, yes?
Yeah, she's on.
There she is. All dressed in green.
Right after.
Good evening, board members. As March begins, I am excited to chair the incredible achievements that have shaped our school community over the past month. From spreading positivity to making an impact through service and athletics. To foster a culture of encouragement, Student Council created a Hall of Gratitude where students wrote positive messages that are now displayed on sticky notes to uplift one another. This initiative served as a reminder that even in challenging times, there's always something positive to hold on to. In addition to spreading positivity within our school, students have also been making a difference in the community. National Honor Society demonstrated their commitment to service by packing sixty meals for Aurora citizens experiencing homelessness, ensuring that those in need receive support. Their efforts extend beyond our city as well, with members creating over a hundred Valentine's cards for patients at Shriners Children's Hospital in Chicago. These acts of kindness represent the dedication of East Aurora students to make a meaningful impact on the lives of others. Athletics have also been a source of achievement this past month. The girls' indoor track team had a bowling book invite on March eighth. The team delivered record-breaking performances. Alyssa Ariori set new indoor school records in both the two-hundred-meter and four-hundred-meter dash. Additionally, Nara Utsueta improved her top-five indoor three-hundred-two-mile meter times, moving up to second place of East Aurora's top indoor times. On the boys' indoor track team, athletes also made history. At the Glenboro North Invite, where East Aurora finished in the top five in eleven different events. A huge congratulations to Jeremy Perez, who set a new indoor school record for the one-mile run. Congratulations to all athletes and the entire track team for dedication and success. We can't wait to see what more you will achieve. And then for this month, I would also like to recognize an outstanding student, Luis Ortiz, for his academic excellence and leadership. Luis has achieved numerous awards, including the AP Scholar with Distinction Award, AP Capstone Diploma, and National Hispanic Recognition. His academic achievements include AP scores of five in Human Geo, English Language, Seminar, and Precalculus. Beyond his academics, Luis is an active leader in the school community, serving as the Secretary of the National Honor Society, Founder and Co-President of the National English Honor Society, and a Student Ambassador. His dedication to both academics and extracurriculars reflect the drive and ambition that East Aurora students continue to embody. As March continues, I look forward to seeing more students rise to new challenges and strengthen our school community. Thank you to all of our teachers, staff, and administrators for their ongoing dedication to student success. Thank you for your time.
Consent agenda as listed.
So move.
Second.
Any questions? Secretary Colorol?
Hubert?
Yes.
Sepuentes?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Moreno?
I abstain.
Johnson?
Yes. Okay. Onto Finance. So tonight, we will just, uh, read our action items to move our celebratory evening along, so. Anyways, onto Finance. So Motion to Approve the Two Thousand and Twenty-Four, Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Independent Audit Engagement Letter.
So move.
Second.
Secretary Colorol?
Hubert?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moreno?
Abstain.
Olivas?
Yes.
Sepuentes?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Motion to approve the following band instrument bids. Uh, Midwest Musical in the amount of three hundred and two thousand six hundred and seventy, Quinlan and Babish in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four, two hundred and thirteen ninety-one, and Elman's Music in the amount of ten thousand six hundred and sixty-one ninety-eight. One more. Oh, we got one more. PM Music in the amount of four thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety cents.
So move.
Second.
Secretary Colorol?
Gillespie?
Yes.
Sepuentes?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Hubert?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve the resolution authorizing the notice of non-renewal for first and third-year probationary teachers, Brock Beddick and Anna Ramos.
So move. Second.
Secretary Colorol?
Sepuentes?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Moreno?
Abstain.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hubert?
Yes.
Okay. Curriculum and Programs with Mr. Sepuentes, we met tonight, and we don't have any action items on that. So moving right along to Buildings and Grounds with Mr. Hubert.
Uh, we do have some action items of this evening. Uh, the first, nine B one, a motion to award the two thousand twenty-five tuck pointing project for base bid plus alternate one to April Building Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. So move.
Second.
Secretary Colorol?
Gillespie?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Sepuentes?
Yes.
Moreno?
Abstain.
Olivas?
Yes.
Yeah.
Olivas? Hubert?
Yes. All right. Uh, second item, nine B two, a motion to award the two thousand twenty-five Waldo Elevator Modernization Project to total elevator service in the amount of one hundred thirty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirteen cents. So move.
Second.
Any questions? Secretary Colorol?
LaShay?
Yes.
Hubert?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Sepuentes?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Uh, action item nine B three, motion to purchase Lenovo Chromebooks with three-year advanced device protection for students entering grades two and nine from ChromebookParts.com in the amount of six hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and one dollars. So move.
Second.
Secretary Colorol?
Hubert?
Yes.
Sepuentes?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
And, uh, action item nine B four, motion to approve the five-year agreement with Conica Minolta Incorporated for multi-function copier service and reproduction slash print plant operations. So move.
Second.
Secretary Colorol?
Sepuentes?
Yes.
Hubert?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
So Communications from the Superintendent, Dr. Norrell.
Hey. Good evening, Board of Education and community members. This evening, our first item we have is, we're bringing back the, um, motion for the data sharing agreement between Operation Hope, the City of Aurora, and, um, East Aurora School District for the Mayor's Child Savings Account. And we did take this back, we had a conversation, and as you saw in your board packet, um, this is an agreement that is opt-in for our families, which we thank them so much for listening to the Board of Education's concerns and making that change, that was huge. It's also a one-year agreement, and so it is set to end June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six, and hopefully before that, we'll be able to make sure that our families are signed up and that they're enjoying it, and they really see the benefit. And so at that point in time, we would do another agreement and come back to the Board to hopefully continue that huge opportunity for our families and our children. Um, and then the other thing is that this is the identical same agreement as our partners across the river, West Aurora, has signed and agreed to this, uh, same agreement. So, um, if there are no additional questions, um, Madam President, you can call the motion.
Motion to approve the data sharing agreement and child savings account with the City of Aurora.
So move.
Second.
Secretary Colorol?
Hubert?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Sepuentes?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Okay. The next item, um, before, um, I have Andy bring that up, I just want to say a couple of words of gratitude because this particular item is my last item I will seek Board consensus on, um, out of my seven years here. Um, it is bittersweet, but this week I will be moving to the community where I will be taking my new superintendent role and continuing my transition activities. And so with that, I just wanna say thank you so much to, first of all, the Board of Education, who's been hugely supportive. Um, as I look to pass the torch, um, to my successor, I wanna just reiterate to this Board, keep doing what you're doing and being supportive because a superintendent can only be successful with a supportive Board behind them. And so I thank you for seven years of support, and I just urge you to continue in that vein so that the next person can continue to step in and do even greater things with you, um, for the next few years. I also wanna say thank you to our staff, um, and our leadership, um, and the community partners. It's been wonderful in the City of Aurora, and I had an opportunity to sit with Dr. Craig Friday for, um, our last AEC activity where we did a podcast video, and he's always, he always keeps you laughing, but one of the things that we just shared is how we enjoyed our partnership so much with all of the community, um, and the City of Aurora. And so I just wanna say, it's been a wonderful seven years, and thank you all so much. And I will leave you with a quite a treat. Before this launches publicly, um, tomorrow, or they may launch it tonight, this is gonna be blasted all across the nation because it's part of our wonderful HR team. Um, Dr. Dave Ballard and Amanda Sanderson helped to, um, lead this effort. This is really our recruitment, and in a time and a day and age where teacher shortage, administrator shortage is a very real thing, they have done an exceptional job of allowing our staff to be our biggest recruitment feature and really sharing some of these. So we've got the shortened version, so it's only a couple of minutes, but I do wanna share because some of the stars of this effort, um, are in this room. So with this, I'll share the video, Andy, if you can pull that up. And if the Board gives consensus, we will launch this nationwide across social media and all of our efforts for recruitment. So Andy, take it away.
Cool. In the state of Illinois, we're the first high school in America that had an orchestra. Our east-west football tradition and things like that, we are the door, our new facilities, groundbreaking.
Reach your full potential.
Alcaga to maximum potential.
It's just a wonderful place, students, staff, and the community is just amazing to work with. I knew that this was a place that really believed in supporting their own, growing their own.
There are a lot of opportunities for growth. You are going to find yourself welcoming the people that care and support you.
Reach your full potential.
Alcaga to maximum potential.
New hire who comes to us has never had teaching experience. They're given a one-to-one mentor, someone who meets with them weekly and helps them through every step of their first two years.
It's truly a family, not good. I mean, they're here for fifteen years now.
Reach your full potential.
We know that being bilingual or multilegal is a huge benefit for our students because it can benefit that to be multicultural beings, um, cross-culturally competent individuals as they are, you know, members of society.
For me, it's a dream come true to see the new generations acquiring a second language. We are welcoming kids from everywhere in the world. We are embracing their cultures, we are embracing their, um, languages. This is where my community needs me, this is where I am getting all that energy from my community.
Every single school I've been to, I have just had wonderful relationships, I've learned so much. And I do think that anytime I need something, the district is very supportive.
An opportunity to grow. They have never said, no, we can't.
There's no other place than here. I love it here, and I will continue to be here.
District One Thirty-One is definitely a place where you are going to grow, where you are going to be happy, where you are going to be able to keep what you have.
Reach your full potential.
Alcaga to maximum potential.
Some of my fond memories, of course, had to be east-west games, you know, back then, whether it was football or basketball, they were definitely the hottest ticket in town. Everybody had to get their outfits, they were getting ready, they got in line, they got their tickets. Uh, they would park miles away to get to the east-west basketball, and that was the biggest thing in the community. East of east, west of west, within Aurora, you can tell. Let me tell you, once the Tomcat, oh, it's not a time. Going to East Aurora was something always to be proud of, you know? Family, friends, a lot of amazing people were on the way. I love what I do. I love my kids, I love the community, I love the opportunities I have to come each day and make a difference. Being here in the district allows me to, you know, have those holidays and weekends off, and some of the days that the students have off. East Aurora, the competitive salary, you know, amazing healthcare benefits, a pension. We have children from over thirty countries. So if you wanna travel the world and never leave your home, come work for this company. Reach your full potential, Alcaga to maximum potential.
Any questions? The Board's, I'm sure, in consensus to release this, and so, Marissa, we're gonna release our new recruitment videos. Thank you so much, Board of Education and community.
Okay, so at this time, um, I'm gonna move to Board comments, so the Board will have a chance to make a few comments about this evening, and then we'll obviously get on to voting for our superintendent's contract. So anyways, any Board members who wanna weigh in, um, please feel free.
Yes, I will start.
Okay.
It has been a great honor, Dr. Norrell, to have worked with you as a community partner and also in the last few months as a Board member. Um, this, earlier this evening, we were getting data that showed about the progress within the district, and that shows your leadership and your creativity and working with your staff to really make a huge difference and the impact that we have on our children in District One Thirty-One. I wanna, uh, just kinda highlight a statement that you had in the, um, in lighter. Um, when you talked about, this has been, um, filled with growth and challenges and countless moments of pride in the strength and spirit of our community. And it takes everyone to make this work. And so, um, that shows how you are willing to just open your arms and heart to make a difference for our children, which is the first, the foremost, what we need to do for our, uh, unionized schools. And so I thank you for that, you know, you would be truly missed. Um, to see the graduation rate, to see the improvement in the achievement gaps of our students. There was one school that had like eleven percent growth from fall to winter. That's tremendous. And that shows leadership and empowering your staff to really be there for the children every day. And we thank you for that. We cannot be so proud. I had a child who graduated from East Aurora School District. And one thing she used to tell me is that, Mom, you know, we need to have the spirit, and that's what I see. And when you, that statement was made, that's what we need in our community, that East Aurora spirit that I've known that's been there for many, many years. So thank you, you would be missed, and I'm sure we'll get a chance to see you again around. But, um, I just want the community to know that we are really missing a great individual who's provided so much to our community. And then I'm excited for our new, uh, superintendent who's coming into the district, who is a homegrown of East Aurora. So we're excited about this opportunity, and thank you, Dr. Norrell.
Thanks so much.
Um, I'll just continue on. So Dr. Norrell, myself, Ms. Johnson, uh, go way back, right? So Ms. Johnson and myself, and then I know Mr. Royals here, um, and any other, I don't know if Mr. Darby's here, or Ms. Hatchett, or Mr. Barrero. We all, we're all part of the Board that actually hired you and interviewed you and went through that process. And I remember wondering who this super, or superintendent hopeful was from Chicago Heights and how that person would fit in here in the City of Aurora, especially on the east side of Aurora, um, with its deep roots, um, and, and pride. And so you, as, um, as Gillespie has said, has really done an outstanding job, uh, Dr. Norrell. Um, when you came in, you, uh, put us on a path for success by really, one of the very first things you did was, um, round us up and get us focused on a strategic plan. And that really has built our success and success that the next superintendent will be able to build on, on, you know, uh, from here. Uh, but if you look at this enlightener, I mean, it, please, everyone, take a look at this, the successes, the milestones that have been made since your arrival, the invest, the millions invested in our buildings, we now have buildings that are just like neighbors to our east. Um, some of our facilities are even exceed those of surrounding districts now. So something we have great pride in, um, and also conducive learning environments that we're just not there before. So you really have done an outstanding job in really working with the Board collaboratively to maintain the strong financial position we have, um, and really setting goals together, you know? And, and that's really key, really, really key. One of the things I think East Aurora has really struggled with for a long time is its image. And I think we still struggle with that when the realities today are just perceptions of yesterday. And, you know, you have really changed that for us, um, in so many ways, your professionalism, your knowledge, your expertise, um, the way you, um, conduct yourself, um, uh, not only here in the boardroom, but just in the community. Really, just something to be proud of, um, and your accomplishments, and for our students, from the AP classes to now a, a career and technical center, we have really addressed the spectrum of what we, our mission is, right? Fulfilling every student's full potential. So, so thank you for that, Dr. Norrell. Um, there's certainly much more work ahead, and I've worked, I, I know the Board looks forward to working with, um, Dr. Halverson. Um, but you really have, um, put us on a trajectory of success, so thank you. Yeah.
We, we do that.
Yeah. Well, together collaboratively, you know? So, so thank you, Dr. Norrell, for your service.
Alrighty. Okay, so I'll just jump in and, and, uh, talk about a few things. So, so tonight, there's some, there's some sadness in the air, and there's some excitement in the air. But you know, Dr. Norrell, obviously, I think Bruce and Theodia did a good job of stating all the accomplishments that have been done in the district. You know, the innovation, the image building, that has been important for East Aurora, the student growth and graduation rates. rates, and just being open-minded enough to take those out-of-the-box programs, like my favorite, the EA PAWS program. So, so, you know, so I thank you for embracing those programs and, and helping, um, our students along the way. But tonight, you know, it's, it's an interesting night tonight. So as we're naming Dr. Halverson our new superintendent, it's, it's kind of, yes, there's some, there's some sadness, there's some excitement in the air, but you know what? It's really about everybody coming home tonight. So to Dr. Norrell, she gets to go home. To, uh, to Bob, he gets to come home. And, and it's, um, and then to Brian, he has this full circle moment of, of Dr. Halverson being his teacher and his wife being his first grade teacher. So, so talk about a full circle moment. You got to admit, this is a full circle East Aurora moment, right? And, you know, it's funny because, you know, myself, I've, I've recently, I've always worked out of town, but I got a chance to come home to Aurora recently with, with my position. And Aurora is really a special place, and, you know, I know you'll miss Aurora, Dr. Norrell, but, but Dr. Halverson, the excitement of coming back home. So tonight is really about coming home. So congratulations to everyone, and thank you very much, Dr. Norrell, for your service, and I look forward to working with you, Dr. Halverson. Thank you. Anyways, okay, so, couple of, uh, little maintenance issues. So, motion to approve the appointment of the new superintendent for the East Aurora School District one thirty-one.
So move?
Second.
Secretary call the roll?
Schubert?
Yes.
Sepuentes?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Lauchey?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve the amendment of the current superintendent contract.
So move?
Second.
Secretary call the roll?
Schubert?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moreno?
Epstein?
Olivas?
Yes.
Sepuentes?
Yes.
Lauchey?
Yes.
Alrighty, so at this time, we have a little video to, to play, so.
I actually began my career in East Aurora at Bardwell Elementary School, where I was a physical education teacher and fourth grade teacher. After five years of teaching there, um, I took the opportunity to go work in Valleyview School District, which is out in Bolingburg and Romeo area, and I taught kindergarten for two years. At the conclusion of those two years, I began applying for administrative jobs and got my first job as an assistant principal at RC Hill Elementary School out in Valleyview. I was there for a year, and it was a large building of about nine hundred students. At the conclusion of that year, we were getting ready to have our second son, and I was looking to be a little closer home because I was driving about forty-five minutes each way. And I took a job in West Aurora where I was an assistant principal for two years. I was promoted to principal, where I had the opportunity to serve for six years. Uh, during that time, one of the best things that happened, one of the most exciting things in my career was we were recognized as an exemplary school by the State Board of Education for three years in a row. Um, that was due to a lot of collaborative efforts with our team there, working with the school leadership team to establish our mission, vision, and collective commitments. Um, it was a great six years of service, and actually, right around the time that COVID hit, um, I was promoted to the assistant director of grants and accountability in West Aurora School District. So after serving in that role for four years, I had the opportunity to come over to East Aurora, where I've now been for eight months, and I've been the executive director of financing grants there, and really enjoyed that opportunity to get back to the community that I began my career in, to the school district that I started my educational career as a student way back in first grade at Krueg School. When you look at the past of East Aurora School District, we have to remember that East Aurora is the oldest school district in the state of Illinois, it's been around since mid eighteen hundreds. Uh, that tradition is rich with history, uh, rich with opportunities, successes that we can celebrate our graduates, uh, but it's also personally me. My mother graduated from East Aurora, my grandparents were graduates in the fifties, um, and my great uncle was actually a member of the school board for fourteen years and was the president of the school board, uh, way back in the seventies area there. When we talk about the present, we've gotten a lot of great growth for our students, we've been fiscally responsible, uh, we've improved our graduation rates to the point where we're at ninety percent now. We've also looked to increase the seal by literacy for our students and, uh, provide numerous opportunities for our students when you look at college and careers. So I'm really excited about the present and where we're currently at, but then I'm also very excited about the future. When you look at the future of East Aurora, I think we have the opportunity to continue to know a district where we have a collective commitment of trust, collaboration, community involvement, um, our career and technical education center that we're in the midst of beginning to build right now, is a great opportunity, not only for our students, but for our community as a whole. Um, so like I said, it's really about the past, the rich history we have, the present, all the things we've achieved as an administrative team with the support of the school board, and then the future, the great expanded opportunities we can provide for all of our students, and the opportunities to prepare students to be either college-ready or career-ready when they come out of our system in East Aurora School District. My top three goals, the first one would be continued academic achievement for our students and continued growth. Uh, when we look at it, we know we've had some great growth over the past few years, we've had some buildings recognized as exemplary, but we really need to drill down and look at how we support each and every student, whether that's a student who needs enrichment or a student who might be operating behind grade level. Secondly, I would look to make sure that we are, um, building a culture and climate that's built on collaboration, trust, a respect for one or for one another, not that we won't have difficult conversations, but when we have those, we always treat each other with a sense of dignity and respect. The third thing I would look to do is make sure that we have a...
And you, a little, little something welcome, I give, from the board, and we put your, put Bardwell in there. Go Bardwell!
Family?
Yes.
You want to bring your family? Here we go. I'm, I got a baby too.
Oh, sure. Going on accident tonight. That was Bob's here, huh?
Yeah.
Everybody kind of see me, right?
Yeah.
Do this on pretty ready. One, two, uh, one, two, three, four. Here, here.
I got a little red on my...
Okay.
So I just want to say first, Marissa told me I looked fine in that video, she said my makeup was good, as I sat there and looked at it, I don't think my makeup was great, so I apologize.
No, in all seriousness, no, seriousness, uh, seriousness, though, I want to thank the school board for the opportunity. Um, Board President Johnson, thank you very much for the opportunity, Executive Cabinet, thank you for the opportunity. I prepared something, normally I'm more of an off-the-cuff guy and would just kind of stand up here and talk, but with it being such a big event, I'm going to read from this just, uh, it still comes from the heart, um, and I just want to read it directly to the school board here in the community as well, so thank you again for the opportunity. Good evening, members of the East Aurora School Board, and thank you for the incredible opportunity to serve as the next superintendent of East Aurora District one thirty-one. With over twenty-two years of experience in education, much of which has been dedicated to supporting our community, I am truly honored to step into this role. Growing up in Aurora and having engaged with our schools as both a student and an educator, I have seen firsthand the rich traditions that define our district. I'm excited to build upon the impressive achievements of the past decade, fostering continued academic growth for our students and establishing a culture of trust and collaboration among all stakeholders. Together, we will create vibrant and meaningful pathways for every student in our district, ensuring that East Aurora continues to shine as a leader in educational excellence for years to come. Thank you once again for your trust, I look forward to working together to create a brighter future for our students and our community. Thank you once again for the opportunity, I'm truly honored. Um, I've shared this during the interview process, if I could pick any spot in the state of Illinois with a pin, any spot in the entire country with a pin and put it on the map to become a superintendent, it would be in East Aurora. Um, it truly is an opportunity to come home. I'm proud of the rich traditions, um, I know that Dr. Norrell has done a ton over the past seven years to improve the image of our district, uh, to improve the academic achievement of our district, and there's big shoes to fill, and I'm willing to step in and take the next step forward to continue to lead us, and I'm excited for that opportunity. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't thank my wonderful wife, Ruby, for always being the support, uh, system for me. And my three boys, um, you know, I enjoy coaching them, I enjoy being around them, we've had conversations already about how Dad's life might change a little bit, and there might be more, uh, evening work for me, et cetera, but I've committed to them that I will still be there, uh, to support them, raise them, and turn them into the fine young men's, that can, young men that can also support our community. Uh, so once again, um, from the bottom of my heart, I just want to thank you for the opportunity, and if I could have Mr. Tom Hartman stand up real quick, please?
Tom Hartman was, uh, my principal at Bardwell, um, and he took the chance on me as an educator. Um, I had a PE background, a classroom background, it was back in two thousand and three when education, the jobs weren't so easy to come by, um, and Tom hired me as a PE teacher, he took a chance on me. I was a young twenty-three, twenty-four-year-old kid, probably a little arrogant, uh, he had a little past that, but, um, but I had the opportunity to grow under his leadership, um, and it was because of Tom, he's the one who encouraged me and said, Bob, you've got some great leadership potential, you should pursue, pursue your type seventy-five degree, become an administrator. Um, if it wasn't for that, I never would have done that, so I'm truly indebted to Tom for his guidance, his leadership back then, what a support structure he was for me, numerous other students throughout, students and teachers throughout East Aurora, so thank you so much, Tom, I really appreciate it.
Um, once again, board, thank you for the opportunity, I appreciate it. Um, any questions for me or anything that we would need to answer right now while I'm in the hot seat? I know, I know what's going, yeah. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Um, I'd like to call our union president, Becky Ryro, up.
Good evening, Becky Ryro, union president for East Aurora Council. Um, first of all, thank you, Dr. Norrell, for your service. Uh, Board of Education, thank you, thank you, thank you for listening, and also thank you for all the different perspectives you, uh, bring. I could just name each of the things that's so unique about each of you, and it's all necessary for us to run a district. Superintendent Halverson, uh, welcome aboard, we are so excited to get working. Um, we are, um, here to help you. Um, we, I said it the first time I came up to this podium, and I mean it, we're all here for the kids, we all have the same mission. And there, there should be a huge amount of collaboration between the union, uh, the Board of Education, and admin, and we're here to work. So let's get to work, so.
Adjourn, and then we can party.
So move.
We had the board comments, yeah. Would you like that? We did not have public comments today.
Just backing.
Yeah. Okay. Got the agenda. Okay. All right, so moves.
So move.
Alrighty, Secretary call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Johnson?
Yes.
Lauchey?
Yes.
Sepuentes?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.